Time again. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My, uh, welcome to the November twenty twenty two zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I think everybody here has, but I'll remind you how the meeting is conducted. We'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Discuss your proposed project or request for variance. Laura will, after that, Laura will be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony can be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate, make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted unless we ask you for it. For those applicants who wish not to stay through deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decisions. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have three members present, which constitutes a quorum. I will not call the role. Uh, Mr. Landers. Mr. Matso.
Present.
Mr. Donovan is present. Ms. Resonetti is excused and Ms. Spelling there. Ms. Buchi is, I had something else there. Uh, she is excused as well. Uh, did you guys get a chance to look at the minutes from last month?
Yes.
Yeah.
How did they look to you?
They looked fine. I'll make a motion note past the minutes from October's meeting.
Okay, can I have a second? Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Now we're ahead of schedule. Now we have to wait about three minutes until the clock catches up to.
You know, my microphone's blinking. My microphone's blinking. Must be dying.
We have time for that. Okay, it is now five twenty. Our first case for the evening is Carney Realty and Development Group. One sixty-two, one eighty, one eighty-four, one eighty-six, Henry and seventy-seven Pine Street and two twenty-nine Court. Area variances for four foot. Rear setback where twenty is the minimum, seventy-three percent lot coverage where seventy is the maximum. Fifty-five in height where forty-five is the maximum, twenty-seven parking spaces where seventy-nine are required. And to provide parking, two hundred fifty-six feet off-site where two hundred fifty is the maximum distance allowed.
Uh, Chairman, I just wanted to make a correction to the agenda. That should be ten parking spaces where seventy-nine are required. And, uh, for the record, the correct agenda is what's posted online. So that's what the public saw.
Oh, so I'm, I'm looking at an old one?
Correct. Yep. That's okay.
Let's. I just printed this off today. Oh. Thank. Seven. But you, I, I know the things you set me up so well with all the prepared documentation, I, you know. Let us slide. Thank you. Um, I see the applicant is here. If you would please introduce yourself and identify.
Hi, Dominic Emilio with CPL from, uh, Binghamton.
Hey. So you had, uh, tell us about the area variances or new material that you, uh, provided since we last got together.
So just to summarize the changes, um, no change to the rear setback variance you mentioned. No change to the lot coverage, no change to the building height. There is technically a change to the parking, uh, because we did lose a lot that the city is unable to, uh, sell to the applicant at this point. Uh, but we did add thirty spaces, um, via basically an understanding, which I emailed documentation of an understanding between the applicant and, uh, the Rumble Ponies ownership. For thirty, thirty, uh, thirty parking spaces in their lot.
Across the street?
Yep. Again, two twenty-nine Court Street was removed from the project. So we went from twenty-one parking spaces. We were going to build the ten. Those are all on the Henry Street lot, the one sixty-two Henry Street. And then addressing concerns that were brought up at this meeting and the planning commission meeting last month. Probably the biggest one was the garbage enclosure that was on the pine street side of the building. That's been removed. The concrete areas remained. We're going to use it as a patio someplace. Probably put a grill and some tables, um, and on past projects they've done pergolas and stuff, you know, make it a nice amenity for the residents. And the garbage was moved interior to the building. Um, on, on residential level one, I'll call it. And then access was added. Directly from that area, um, from that, that area on the east side of the building with access out to Henry Street. So now all the refuse will be dragged out and picked up on Henry Street, probably a couple of times a week. And it'll be a private hauler situation.
Okay.
Uh, anything, oh, the solar study we submitted, and I know that was a concern of, I think it's eighty-one Pine Street, a couple of doors down. Um, we submitted that. You can see the findings there that basically we're, because we're removing several large trees to build the building, we actually have a net positive effect on the solar array at eighty-one Pine Street.
Did, did you share that with the, uh, his name Eric, Mr. Leonard?
I sent him those materials. Yep.
Okay, good.
And then the other minor change based on planning commission comments, we added bike racks. We do have an interior bike room for residents, but we added three bike racks to Henry Street and one on Pine Street. So enough for six, presumably six bikes and on Henry and two bikes on Pine Street. More for visitors, but particularly for the commercial space.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I kind of do. I mean, it's probably a silly question, but you're going to take thirty spaces over to the Rumble Ponies area? Yes. What happens when the game's going on? Someone wants to get in and out?
They're gonna have, uh, this. So the, they're, they're basically going to have a placard that they can hang in their window.
Okay.
And the staff at Rumble Pony will, will have to be, you know, told that these people have parking full-time and it's been kind of allocated at the east end of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, the ones that would be empty or last sold on, on game night and and that's, that's kind of how the agreement was, was made between the Carney, the applicant and the rubble pony.
Good.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the twenty-seven parking spaces where seventy-nine, that twenty-seven stayed the same?
I think that's going to tap.
That's going to ten because they, the lot, they had two ancillary parking lots, one at one sixty-two Henry, one at two twenty-nine Court.
Right.
The two twenty-nine Court is no longer part of the application. The city did not, uh, is not going to be selling that lot to the applicant, and so they couldn't use it.
Okay.
So that leaves ten on Henry and then they have the thirty, uh, at the stadium.
It's, it's still seventy-nine required by code?
Correct. And to clarify, the ten are the only that, uh, spaces that count officially towards the minimum parking requirement. The ones at the stadium do not count officially because they're not under the ownership of the applicant.
Okay.
But you can't consider them, you know, practically speaking.
Now, is the variance for the two hundred fifty-six feet still being requested or is that off the table now?
That, uh, distance variance is still needed for the one sixty-two Henry Street, uh, lot.
Okay.
Good.
Just want to be clear.
Yeah, that was my next question. Good.
Okay.
And that number, I'm sorry, should be two seven six. Not two fifty-six.
Gotcha. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, then I would, uh, like to make motion, I don't have that promotion, but to reopen the public hearing portion of, uh, this applicant or the Kearney Realty and Development Group for Henry Street Court, Pine Street Court Street. So anyone present wishing to speak or, or against the proposed action, please come on down. Are you able to address that question?
I, I'm really sorry to interrupt. I got a message that you can't be heard over the Zoom. Is it green, is it green?
How about that?
Okay.
Um, so I get the impression this is going to happen no matter what I say, because I'm me and I, you know, live on Pine Street, so, um. With the construction of the fire station, there's been some serious issues, like, um, things fall out of cabinets when they're putting the metal poles in for the building. And even now, even though it's a one-way street, um, the people that are doing the construction feel that that doesn't apply to them. So they now pull large equipment into my driveway to back it up into the entrance for the fire station. And so when you add in another large construction on a residential street, like, I feel like we're just asking for a small child to be killed. Because we do have small children. They do play outside. They try to enjoy their lives, like, but I guess that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Uh, question for the, uh, applicant. What kind of, is there privacy fencing going back as part of the, when it's done? How high is that going to be? Do you know? Not actually, no. I mean, just for consideration, it's a good spot for something like an arbor by the that's thinning, go grows vertically. Cause I know you don't want something that's going to spread a lot.
No. Four foot doesn't give you a lot of room to put in your mechanic.
Uh, we, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's was gonna be my next question, right? Just a large apartment building next to a residential. That two feet probably would make a difference for that person, that family.
Also, when is your, in terms of phasing with construction that's going on there right now? When is you, when, i- if it was approved and planning approval, when would you start construction? Do you have a timeline? Spring? Think they would all hope it's done soon. I think everybody on the street, everybody in the city wants it done soon.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else present wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed project? Okay. Then I guess I would move to close the public hearing for one sixty-two, one eighty-two, one eighty, one eighty-four, eighty-six, Henry, seventy-seven Pine and twenty, twenty-nine's off, right? For those for Carney Realty, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we've already gone through and done the use variance, correct? So now we have to go to the seeker of, all right. I would like to move that this is an unlisted seeker under, under seeker and that the zoning board of appeals be a lead agency. Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bear with me and my allergies. It's a short form of seeker, same thing as we did last time. Uh, well, proposed action, and they left a couple of blanks for us to, to discuss. Will proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And keep in mind, this is, has to do with the, uh, area variances that we're talking about. Well, branding these variances cause a conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations. It's left blank because it doesn't meet the zoning requirements. So we have to determine is that a small or no impact, or is that a large impact? For the area as a whole, I would say it would be a, a minor to small impact. For the neighbor right next door, it's going to be more than a minor impact. I, I, I get you. But, uh, I would, I would say it's a small impact. Will the proposed action result in a change in the user of use or intensity of use of land? Uh, small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community? That one again is left blank for us to consider whether that's a small or a moderate to large impact. And I would make the same argument to the existing community as a whole. Probably a small impact.
I agree.
Okay. Well, proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area. Uh, no, it should not have an effect in that. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? That should be a small impact there. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Uh, no, it should not affect that. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities should not affect those uh, measurably. Will the proposed action impair the character quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Uh, should not impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, uh, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No, should not. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Should not affect those. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Should have small effect there, if any. Having gone through those, uh, criteria, I would, uh, move that we have a negative declaration per seeker. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now to the criteria for an area variance. So the criteria are whether an undesirable change will produce, will be produced by granting these variances, whether the benefit, benefit taught sought can be achieved by some other method, whether the variance is substantial, whether it's going to cause an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood and whether or not it was self-created. So let's start with that, uh, first one, the setback. Four foot setback where twenty feet is the max or the minimum. And this is for just, is that just seventy-seven pine?
And where are we on?
The area variance for the rear setback. Is that the?
That's for seventy-seven pine. That, that's the rear setback of the building. So that falls on seventy-seven pine, yes, um, but it's sort of a rear setback for the whole site because the lots will be combined.
That's here.
The, the way I looked at it is it would be the between Henry and Pine Street parcels, the two Pine Street parcels furthest to the west.
Right over there. Okay. Right. Okay. Just want to make sure we're talking about the same space or okay, so going from twenty feet to four feet is that an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood?
Is, is there a wall there?
That's what I thought.
It's, it's a little shoddy. We, I think we talked about this last time. It's probably going to end up getting rebuilt.
Is it a wall or is retaining?
Retaining wall.
And, and where's the higher elevation?
Pine Street is quite a bit ten or twelve feet higher.
The wall on your property or the?
Yeah, yeah, um.
I think so.
It's where the banana plant, they call it the banana.
Get a, get a comment.
It, it, it is shoddy. Like I said, it's, it's going to need to be addressed during construction.
Well, the property line, the, the separation is going to be consistent with what it was before. So I don't, I don't think I would find it undesirable. And it's going to be an improvement. It's going to physically be maintained, established, repaired. It's going to be usable, so.
The undesirable. Going back on somebody else's property. It's right on theirs and the retaining wall there. And like you said, you're going to regret the retaining.
Right.
I've seen this issue with that.
So sticking with the four foot setback. Could the same, could, could this benefit have been achieved by some other method? And I think it boiled down to a kind of a calculation of square footage required for the project overall, um, to determine where the structure was going to go in relation to the property lines.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not I'm, I'm relatively convinced that the applicant looked at sitting as close to established zoning code as possible. And four feet is better than on the line.
I agree.
Okay, whether or not the requested area variance is substantial. The different, difference between twenty feet, four feet is, could be argued that it is substantial. However, if you check a lot of properties in this area and other areas of Binghamton, there are, there are an awful lot of spots where and this is for new work. It's supposed to be twenty feet, but existing buildings go right up to the property line. So I don't really, I don't think it's that substantial overall in the scheme of having it laid out. Not not the preferred, but it is what it is. Is that variance going to cause an adverse effect? Or impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? I think by granting it and allowing that part of the project to be done, it's going to improve the condition of the neighborhood. And I think we could probably kind of say for each one of these that, yes, this is self-created and all of these requests are pretty much self-created. Just do the, do the process of what we're going through of your project to, to.
Saying they're self-created in the sense that they are building the project, but they're not self-created. They're coming and asking for permission after that.
Correct. Which we have seen a number of times. Doug, are we, I'm, I'm assuming that we should go through one by one and then vote on them or? Doug, are we, I'm, I'm assuming that we should go through one by one and then vote on them, or as we go, or go through all of them and then vote as a group?
Either way, but they need to all be discussed and then the merits of each, of each point, you've got to each variant to consider.
Well, finish talking about each one of the variances first or about, if we go.
I'm fine either way.
Alright to it, okay. Second variance, area variance is seventy-three percent lot coverage, where seventy is the maximum. Would granting that variance in undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood?
It's both.
It's very close to being the approved.
Right, and they need it to get the number of units. So I think they've done well with that. Very cool.
I don't, I don't have a huge problem with the seventy-three versus seventy. Could it have been, could the benefit have been achieved by some other method? The only alternate to make taking up more space on the
Right.
plan is to go up.
Right.
And going any higher, I don't think would have been met with any kind of yeah, it would have been worse in that way. So again, sounds reasonable. Whether or not the requested area variance is substantial, seventy-three versus seventy. I don't, I, I wouldn't call it substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. Uh, I don't think it's gonna have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions. To some extent, it's gonna be improvement, it's gonna be any variance in the, in the building. And it's gonna be an upset to the area of the building, but in place, I don't think it's gonna have an adverse effect. And again, yes, it was self-created in the way that we discussed. Fifty-five foot height where forty-five is the max. And that's fifty-five only in one part of it above grade, correct?
It's fifty-five long Henry Street, but again, due to the grade change, it's only thirty-six feet. Um, the grade change and the difference between the commercial and residential levels, it's only thirty-six feet on Pine Street.
Okay. So is it an under, a desired change to grant this fifty-five foot height, it's a, it's a ten foot?
It's an extra story, I don't really see a
On the Henry.
On the Henry Street side, I don't see a big issue with it.
No, if it was on the other side.
Yes.
It would be much more substantial.
Sure.
And more impactful. So I'm, I'm I'm willing to say that it's not an undesirable change on, since it's on the Henry Street side. Whether the benefits can be achieved by some other method. Uh, again, we had that discussion on the last the area versus the height. It's gotta go somewhere to get the overall square footage to meet the whole project design. So I'm not sure if it, yeah, you'd be looking at a larger variance in one other area, so I, I'm, I'm satisfied they, they did an investigation to get to where they got. Whether it's substantial. Fifty-five feet from ground level is, you know, five, five stories is relatively high, it's not the highest downtown, but in residential areas, that is relatively high.
If you look at fifty-five feet, you can look at the scoreboard at the stadium, that's fifty. So another couple of feet higher.
Yeah. So it's not gonna be totally out of place in the area that it's in, but it's gonna be a little higher, it's gonna be noticeable. We run substantial, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I mean, in the scheme of things, it's, I don't think it's gonna be hugely substantial. Is that height gonna be an adverse effect on the, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? I, I really don't, I don't think it's gonna be a huge change there. It's gonna be different, it's gonna be new. In a lot of ways, it would be positive. And again, the same comment on self-created. Ten parking spaces where seventy-nine are required. Now, we've heard the argument on the parking is because some of it was correct me if I'm wrong, some of it is, maybe this is supposed to be a walking accessible, kind of encouraging people to walk the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that's a kind of a ancillary benefit of, of what's going on. Again, they, they were happy to, the applicant was happy to, to purchase both lots in the neighborhood that were available. Um, but that's not one lot, so there, there's ten spaces there, we even considered after discussing with the city and, and others do with this, with enough leased spaces from the rumble ponies, do we get rid of that lot? Um, because it's ten spaces and it's, you know, it's a, it's a remote lot. But they really wanted to have whatever they could in their control. The fact that it's a little further, which I know is another variance, you know, they think is, is a net positive on the neighborhood, just increasing foot traffic.
Now, you, you, uh, how many spots are available at the two-hundred-seventy-six foot distance?
Ten.
Ten, that's the ten?
Yep.
Okay. And those, that's all the parking that's associated, dedicated to this.
That's all the parking under control by the applicant, but they do have uh the agreement with the rumble ponies for thirty additional.
We're, we're gonna have that in our, okay, thank you. Whether it's an undesirable change to approve the ten versus the seventy-nine. Uh, keeping in mind that thirty of the seventy-nine, so it, it, it's actually about half are accounted for, they're not under the direct control, thirty of them are available through agreement. Does it an undesirable change? To grant an, an area variance for ten or eighty or seventy-nine are required. I've heard some discussion in this project that uh, I think they're encouraging bus transport and use of mass transit for applicants. So I don't know if that's entered into the equation or not.
Uh, Tito, why, why is it seventy-nine required? That, that calculation was based on a number of units and beds per unit, and then there's the different calculation for the commercial space, so the the combined total requirement came out to seventy-nine.
Alright, so with the commercial space and then the units.
Correct, yep, okay. So it's not necessarily going to mean they're gonna need all seventy-nine spots.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But per, per zoning and code, seventy-nine, that's what it works out to. So back to, back to the parking issue, is it an undesirable change to grant that? So essentially, setting people free who do have cars who want for parking in the area.
Is, is there available parking on Henry Street? Is there, is there street parking on Henry?
There is meter parking on Henry Street, yeah, that's across the street from.
But it's, yeah, it's not twenty-four hour park.
Oh, no, they've got meters.
Yeah.
Yes, they do. Right.
Yeah. Did, did part of the uh design really take into account how many cars the, the developer thought would be part of the project?
Yes, and, and a number of their other developments, similar developments down in the Hudson Valley, in particular, they've done identical projects with zero parking. Um, and they've been successful, it's not that nobody in that building is driving. But just, just based on their history, which is, you know, they have numerous very similar developments throughout New York State.
Anecdotally, do you know if the, I, it's had cars and it just had no effect on the area, or if they came with no cars?
I don't know, I, I, I don't know, I doubt there was no cars.
Yeah.
I don't know what the ratio was of, of how many were driving.
Okay.
We, we, I, I, I know we keep talking about ten, I just wanna emphasize the thirty, which gets us to the fifty, over fifty percent. Which I, I think, Tito, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think over fifty percent, we don't technically need the variance, the planning commission can grant that, but that's obviously the better, the easier route.
The planning commission has the authority to grant a fifty percent waiver of parking.
And I, I, I also point out, so we effectively have forty, and we fully expected that to be a contingent approval that this is approved, that you maintain the thirty um under, you know.
You're anticipating a long-term agreement.
Yeah, 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 he's starting with a fifteen-year lease.
That's great.
Um, that he's actually, that they're actually gonna pay upfront, that's the agreement they have right now. Uh, so those, that's prepaid for fifteen years and that's not an issue.
Okay.
The other thing I'd point out is sixty-five of them are, are sixty-five of the required seventy-nine are for the residences.
Right.
So the other fourteen are for the commercial space, I would have no matter what commercial space you put there, I would expect those people to be parking on the street throughout the day, just like anywhere downtown, so I, I, I think we're a lot closer than the numbers look on paper, I just wanna point that out. I, I didn't hear the, I
But I'm, my, my bad. To what extent is there any interplay between the businesses being open in the day and parking being in a premium at night when people come home? Is, have you found that in the project where there's any?
Relative to the rumble ponies?
Like, so the business, no, so rumble ponies are gonna be the exception to the rule because that, the rules just won't apply during those games. But like a normal day, will the businesses close down, people come home and use those parking spaces, or I guess what I'm saying is is there dual use of some of the same parking spaces anticipated?
We, so we have no idea what, what will be in the commercial spaces, I know that, you know, they talked about um not a full-blown brew pub, brew pub or anything like that, but maybe like a tasting room they think would be a really good fit. Given this, the proximity to the stadium, they're not huge spaces, so you're not gonna have a brewery down there, you just don't have the square footage. So but o- other than that, just things that have been tossed around and, and based on other, other.
I just know that in some other areas.
Yeah, I, I definitely.
During the day, it's commercial parking where the business closed, the commercial parking goes away, people come home and park there for the evening, and then they, they go for work in the morning, then the commercial.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see like twenty-four hour businesses, but I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if there's businesses that are open till eight or nine o'clock, particularly, you know. If, if it's a small retail shop, probably not gonna be.
The downside though is that when the, when there is a baseball game, that all goes out the window for the, that parking all.
Yeah, and I mean, I would say, I know when I go to a baseball game, I, I park on Pine Street. Or, or, you know, one of the surrounding streets, so I think that's an.
Or whether, or in the library or something like that, yes, I.
Exactly, um, the Lord's parking lots are around the corner. So I, I, I think that, that's an issue on game night, whether this is a, a building there or not, I think that's just a necessary evil of the, of the stadium.
I'm not sure if they still run it, but I know we got approval from the state to do a residential parking permit system for Pine Street, so I don't know if they still issue those for what, for Pine Street? For residents on Pine Street?
Oh, really? Interesting. Number of years ago.
Okay, back to the uh parking variance we're discussing. After, after that discussion of uh hearing how, how things have worked elsewhere with even less dedicated parking and it works. And taking into consideration that we're about, in actuality, about fifty percent of the required amount of parking spaces.
Right.
Does that make it an undesirable, or less undesirable?
I think we're a little over fifty, right?
Just a little.
Seventy-nine to eighty.
Yep.
I don't think it's undesirable.
No, I don't.
It, I would say it's not the best, but I've seen works. And, you know, you'd always like to see, you know, park into accommodate everybody.
Right.
But in lieu of that, there's, there's an effort been made. So could the applicant have achieved something better uh by some other method? They've got more spots, well, I think they tried to get more in other spots, but then those areas were ruled out.
Certainly not to say if other lots become available over the years, that they're not willing to buy them up and add additional lot-street parking. Right.
I think, I think the point to me is you, you've done a lot of work looking for parking spots, not a whole lot have come available. Uh, and I do give you a lot of credit for negotiation, negotiating with the rumble ponies. Is, would granting this part of the variance be substantial? Compared to other typical kind of variances for parking, I don't think it would be that substantial. Fifty percent is about as far as you'd wanna go, but it's on the verge of being substantial. But the granting of this variance cause an adverse effect or impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Again, it's gonna affect the neighbors directly that are right next door, and I, you know, I, I feel for you. But for the whole community, I, I, I don't think it's gonna have a huge. And the same comment on self-creation. And I think we're on our last areas, the two-hundred-seventy-six feet to the ten foot. Or the, to the ten spots we're talking about, where two-fifty is the maximum allowed. Yeah, uh, if it were right at two-fifty, we wouldn't have the discussion, we're twenty-six feet further. Is that an undesirable change? I would, I would argue that that's most people, if they're walking the distance of two-fifty and two-seventy-six, would not know the difference. I really don't think it's an undesirable difference. Again, parking is difficult, you've looked at a lot of options, could have been achieved by some other method, if it could have, it'd be in there. Is two-seventy-six versus two-fifty substantial? I would argue that it's not. Uh, but granting that part of the variance, would it be have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions? I don't believe so. And again, same, same comment on whether it's self-created. Alright. Anybody like to present a motion, or wait, before we do that?
Good to talk about the two-thirty-nine from the county.
Yeah, they submitted comments, they found no significant county-wide impacts.
They did have some other comments about uh was this, they had comments regarding coordinator review and other, they're typical kind of
Yeah.
Related comments.
Yeah, some of those things uh pertain a little bit more to the planning submission, so the planning commission will have, have a chance to address some of those things, but they have a sort of a new set of standards for their site plans.
Yes.
Um, and they wanted to see some of those items on them, but
And site plan is conceptual at this point only, it's really not. I mean, the site plan is gonna develop as this plan gets more fully developed. Those are pretty, those look pretty set, but you're, you're at a certain layer of development. Okay.
Well, before we do that, can I ask you one question? When construction starts? Because she's having an issue now with the fire department, like she said, that construction company's going in and out of your driveways. That does do, quite take a toll on the driveways and whatever, could, they could be possible to maybe try and minimize that so it does not affect her?
Absolute, I mean.
I mean, it's just out of consideration quality of.
No, absolutely, I mean, pulling into somebody's driveway is probably, frankly, illegal without you know, permission, so I don't
First, you know, I don't foresee it either, but you can't say it's not gonna happen.
Right, you know, it's, we will certainly, we, we can certainly do our best, and, and I'll make a note.
Yeah, I mean, it does, it does take a toll on the driveways if it's paved or whatever, because I, I see it happening, you know.
I I I will say that the applicant does GC their own work.
Okay.
Um, there will be a number of subs, obviously, in a building like this. But I I can make a note that that needs to be communicated. And, you know, I would I I would recommend to the neighbors that if it things that are happening that are outside of code, shutting down the street without a permit and things like that, then, you know, they should, you know.
Notify the neighbors when you are shutting down the street for maybe water lines or something or.
Yeah, it can be done, but you got to.
Yeah.
You got to go through the process. You can't just.
Sure.
Block a street. So.
Right. No, I just out of consideration for the neighbors.
I I I'll make that note.
All right. I'd like to make a a request to approve the applicant for Kearney Realty and Development Group for the area variance for four feet setback or twenty foot is the minimum seventy three foot lot coverage for seventy percent is the maximum. A fifty five foot in height where forty five foot is the maximum. Ten parking spaces, correct, or seventy nine?
Correct.
Are required to provide parking two hundred and seventy six feet. It's where two hundred fifty is the maximum distance allowed. And one other thing, too, when they I don't know if we can do this or not, but when it's time to get their contract set up with the rumble ponies, could that be presented also? My mic could put off again. If you could do it with a lease that the the lease is submitted and that it probably be filed in the kind of clerk's office. And and actually, what I would ask is if you're going to make that lease a condition of approval, I would ask that there either be a lease or that there provision of a of the certain number of parking spaces. So that if it's say fifteen years, the lease expires, but they've acquired two more properties in the neighborhood, that they create those parking spaces that are affordable.
So with the current fifteen year agreement, be acceptable at this point to the city?
Yes, it would be acceptable. What I'm saying, we would not want the lease agreement to expire and then them not have parking.
Correct. All right. And as long as the fifteen year agreement with the rumble ponies, and once that expires, either renew it or if they acquire another piece of property to.
That they can be deducted from the.
Known.
Yep.
Yeah, for equivalent spots. If you.
Yeah, that that's we we kind of expected that contingent language. I I think you guys said fifty. It's fifteen. That's what we said fifteen.
Okay.
One five. We were saying fifteen. I'm sorry. Okay, sir.
If you want to go fifty, that's fine.
Hang on a second.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Under the next step of the process. Good luck going forward.
You all.
He was a neighbor. Please keep in contact with them. They need to be good neighbors to you. Well, they you probably wouldn't yet, but you you should going forward when anything is being done. I would hope that they would be in contact with everyone on Pine Street. Is it going to affect everyone in that block? Okay, thank you very much. If they don't let the city know for sure.
It should be in place. I believe if I'm not sure how many, how long it's been since they've actually issued one, because it was approved many years ago. But if you go down to the city clerk's office, you there should be a way to apply for a residential parking permit on Pine Street.
Wanted to what?
If you wanted, if you want to make it a business, a commercial type of use, yes, you would have to go through the issues as well. Oh. It's still, it's a different use than a residential. Yes, you would probably have to go for for zoning for parents. Yes.
Thanks. Do we have the second app applicant Pike Development for one eighty three Water Street? Bye. If you can give us your name and address and then tell us which project.
My name is Jacob Von Mecco. I live at one six one one Shore Drive.
You can move the microphone down. It bends right down to.
Yeah, there you go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Now we can hear you. I'm representing Wyndham Planning and Design. And also representing the United Pike Joint Venture to redevelop the Water Street garage.
Welcome. So you're looking for a number of area variances. Tell us about that.
So the previous garage that I'm sure you're all very familiar with was in itself not compliant with the zoning. It was built out to the property line. Two of the variances we're looking for are both area variances. And they are required essentially to construct the garage on the same footprint that the previous garage occupied. That is the lot coverage variance. The zoning allows for ninety percent. We are looking for one hundred percent. Essentially, we're building right out to the property line. The same similar issue, the minimum side setback for the parcel is twenty feet. And we are looking for zero feet. There's only one side yard, if you will, for this lot, since it wraps the the block. That is the property line that it shares with Boskovs. And part of the project is connecting the the new parking garage to the Boskovs portion of the parking garage just as the previous garage had that connection. We also have a height variance. The allowable height for this location is one hundred and twenty feet. I believe the variance we're looking for is one hundred and twenty five. There's still some some minor fluctuation in the height of the building as we go through the design process. So the the actual building itself could potentially be shorter than one hundred and twenty five. But since there's some uncertainty there, we thought it would be best to apply for the variance in case we need that extra five feet.
Okay. Isn't there construction going on now with this?
So the 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 old garage has been demolished. And in the interim, it's recently been repaved as a surface parking lot, or at least half the parcel has. So that Boskovs still has the appropriate amount of parking that they need for the holiday season. It's their big shopping season. So there is currently a temporary surface parking lot there in the interim. But the construction proper has not begun.
No, that's not part of this. No.
Okay, good. All right. At this point, is I don't think there is there anything else we can do at this point?
You can't vote. You can open the public hearing. Doesn't look like there's anybody here.
We did open the public hearing last month.
Okay, that's right. So.
Without your presence, sorry for getting started without you last time.
So we so since it was left open, you can ask if there's anyone here to speak and then leave it open and table.
Okay, the as as Tito just did mention, we did open the public hearing last month. If there were anyone here to speak, we we could reopen it. But seeing no one present who could speak and there's nobody call in, right? Is there anybody?
No, there's no way to do that at this time.
I guess there's no point in opening the public hearing, but just that we'll continue it held over as we did from the last month to extend the hold to next month. Is that acceptable?
I want to say that that as a technicality, you have to open, you have.
Open it and leave it open.
I never really opened. I haven't.
It may sound strange, but I think probably the proper procedure is to open it so you can table.
Okay, well, let's do that then. I'd like the most open discussion, a public hearing of one eighty three Water Street. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And as we spoke last time, we did when we were having public hearing, we deferred seeker to the planning commission as the lead agency.
Correct.
Just to remind everyone, so they get to do the type one action. And that being said, anything, though? Any questions for the applicant?
I have a simple question. How tall is Boskovs? Just wonder, will the parking ramp the project be taller than Boskovs? It will be.
Yes, so I believe Boskovs is either four or five stories tall. I'd need to clarify that. I'm not sure, but the proposed structure will be ten stories, so almost twice the height.
Oh.
But the top five stories will not be parking garage. It will be a residential structure that sits on top of the apartment. One thing that was a little bit of interesting anecdotally on the the height of the building, it will be the eighth tallest in the city of Binghamton. With the seventh being the Doubletree Hotel, which of course is directly across the street.
Okay.
We will change the skyline.
Yeah. But closer to the double.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other question?
No.
We'll probably have more questions for you next month, but thank you for coming to visit us.
Sure.
We appreciate it and we look forward to hearing more about the project. I would like to table this action or that's a close it.
Or table. Okay.
Table till we open for next month. The next month will be what date? Can we know? It'll be two first Tuesday. Probably first Tuesday for next month.
I want to say it's December fifth. One second. No, it's the first Monday.
I thought we're moving to Tuesday.
That's for twenty twenty three. It's okay. It is the fifth.
All right, can I have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
That is best. Thank you very much.
I actually have a a clarification on that schedule. The COD meeting is on the sixth. So this will be before the COD.
Yeah, card meets on Tuesdays.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that's not going to drop the schedule because they were going to be on the same day if it was both on Tuesday. But now it's going to be on Monday. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other business before us? I haven't wanted to do a chart, but I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you very much.